Good morning to each and everyone. At this time, we'll turn it over to our very capable Assistant City Clerk.
This is the regular weekly meeting of the Mobile City Council for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Please stand for an invocation led by Pastor Liddell Cleveland Senior, New Bayside Baptist Church, and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Long time no see.
Yes, sir.
I'm so excited to be here today and to pray for this city council and for our city. Let's talk to the Lord. Our Father and our God, as we come before you today, we first want to say thank you, Lord, for waking us all up this morning and giving us another opportunity to serve you, to serve our city, and to serve our community. We ask for your blessing on this city council. We ask for your blessing on everyone that is present today. And oh, God, as we seek and go through this life, we know there are some difficulties that's going to come, but we know if we trust and depend on you, all shall be well. We thank you. We glorify your name. In Jesus' name, we pray today. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united in God, indivisible, infinite, just as it was.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
And Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Yes, ma'am. First, we would ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices upon entering or even before entering the council meeting. Any person designed to address the council must sign in, indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, a public hearing, agenda item, before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, each speaker is asked to give both your name and your address for the record. Any person designed to speak to the city council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hadn't given that proper notice to the clerk's office will not be allowed to address the council. Speakers are granted three minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound indicating the end of your second minute, which means that you have one minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. It is my job as the presider to let you know that your three minutes are up. It's not personal. It's not a slight against you. It's just that your time is up. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and then any council member who wishes to be recognized will have that opportunity. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we're genuinely appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of the meeting of May 25th. So moved.
Second.
We'd probably move in second. Any discussion? If not, minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Hope that you had a good Memorial Day, had some time off. Last week, we announced the class and introduced the newest class of interns for our YES Initiative, which is Youth Empowered for Success. These students will soon be taking paid positions throughout about a dozen city departments. For many, it's their first job that they've had, and the hope for is that they will learn some job skills, get some work experience to start them off on their careers. This class is the fifth class that we've had, and since 2016, we've had over 2,000 young people either work as paid interns for the city or to work for local companies. Anyway, we're glad to be a part of that, and we appreciate the partners that also give those internships out into the private sector. On another note, on today's agenda, this is the first read on a couple of items. One has to do with stormwater mapping. We received approximately a $3 million grant from the federal government, part of Restore Funding, to map every single inlet, and that stormwater inlet, throughout the entire city. And eventually, that will help us in our planning of where we need to do stormwater repairs. It's a very extensive program because it covers the entire city limits, plus part of Chickasaw and Pritchett. So probably a two-year project. Anyway, it will certainly help us as we address our future needs, our future drainage needs. Another item that's on the list is what I would refer to as another phase of the rebuilding of Ann Street. Probably in 2016 or '17, we started rebuilding Ann Street from Duval Street up to Tennessee Street, approximately where the railroad tracks are. So for those that have traveled it, you know it was a complete rebuild. I mean, it was kind of like what you see on Broad Street or Baltimore Street today. So the first phase, as I said, from Duval to Tennessee Street. This phase will be from Tennessee Street to Virginia Street. It's not but three blocks, but it's very, very critical in this process of completely fixing the drainage into those areas, those neighborhoods off of Ann Street, all the way to Government Street. If you can visualize under this part of Ann Street, there'll be two 5-foot by 10-foot culverts, and that's how much water goes under Ann Street. Again, 5 by 10, two of them underneath that street. So a very expensive project. It'll probably take a year to do it, but it's crucial to addressing some of the stormwater problems that we have in all those neighborhoods that the drainage feeds into Ann Street. Also, it'll be new sidewalks, and it'll be completely done. Best way to determine what it'll look like afterwards is to see the first phase that was done south of Tennessee Street. You know, today is a lot of announcements having to do with the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. And last Friday, we graduated Class 2002. It was a very diverse class for our first responders. As you know, Tony McCarron has been very instrumental in reaching out, trying to make sure that we get the diversity that is reflected by the city. And so this class is a diverse class. I would point out that it's been brought to my attention that the person that graduated at the top of the class, Abraham Matuvu, finished both academically and physically at the top of the class, and he's a native of Uganda. I also understand that we also had a graduate from Australia, a lady from Australia completed the course. So I don't think Tony had to go all the way there to recruit him. If you do, we'll start checking his travel budget. But anyway, we are getting some diversity. At this time, I will call on, I know that Chief Batiste wants to recognize the Firefighter of the Month, and then Chief Lamie has a couple of announcements, recognitions that he would like to make. So Director Batiste.
If Chief Lamie and Captain Odom will join me at the podium. The Mobile Fire Rescue Department announces Fire Service Captain Juanita Odom as May 2021 Firefighter of the Month. Captain Odom began her career with Mobile Fire and Rescue Department in 1984 and currently serves as Lead Fire Investigator. Throughout her career, Captain Odom has remained a stalwart piece of every crew, team, task force, and division in which she was a member. Her perseverance, continued education, and remarkable service have led her through a highly decorative career. As such, Captain Odom has received several awards, ribbons, specialized titles, and commendations, including Materia Service, Service Recognition, Rescue Tech, Military Service Ribbon, Rescue Technician, Hazardous Material Technician, and more. She was certified as an investigator through the Alabama Fire College in 2007, and in 2011, Captain Odom joined Mobile Fire and Rescue Department Bureau of Fire Prevention and Investigation Division. After attending a local police academy, Captain Odom was certified by the Alabama Peace Officers Standard and Training Commission, APOS, further positioning herself in criminal investigation, accepting an assignment as Mobile Fire and Rescue Department's On-Duty Investigator in 2012. Odom ironed out her niche, focusing on fire investigations, currently serving as Lead Fire Investigator for the Mobile Fire Rescue. While what the public sees in Captain Odom's dedication to fire investigation, her fellow employees see her passion for helping others. Captain Odom has been recognized for a vital role in peer support team. She is always there to provide comfort and support for others in need. Though her humble heart would never accept kudos or individual recognition, Captain Odom is most certainly deserving of every superlative and worthy of praise. Captain Odom is a servant who is committed to the safety of our community. Words and awards cannot adequately represent the appreciation of the City of Mobile or the Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Now, therefore, on behalf of all citizens and with our sincere thanks, we are pleased to award the certificate of recognition to her as Firefighter of the Month for May 2021.
Not a person of a lot of words. I do like to work. I thought it was interesting to, I've been with the city over 27 years, and I was like, wow, that was a book he was reading, but I guess 27 years is a long time. Anything that was said in there about me is because there are amazing people that I work with on the fire department who are deserving of any recognition that I get. They work very hard, very professional, beautiful, beautiful minds and beautiful souls that we all should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
I'd like to say to the Firefighter of the Month, very great spirit. You know, with the spirit that you have and the comments you just made, that you couldn't do without your team, that's the reason why you got the Firefighter of the Month. Again, congratulations and love to your spirit.
Thank you very much. She does a fantastic job. She's been really busy over the weekend with the fires that we've had at the Walmarts. She's the lead investigator on that case, so I had to kind of pull her away from that, but she's going to be busy the rest of the week on that case. But next up, Chief Keller, can you step up here, please? First of all, I'd like to say thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity. It's been quite some time since I've been in this room with you, so it's nice to see everybody again, and I'm especially thankful of the opportunity to be able to present this. I know it's a busy council agenda every week, but we certainly appreciate you all taking the time to allow us to recognize our members. Next up is Chief Keller. Chief Ken Keller has been on the department for over 20 years now, and he's progressed up the ranks steadily. And he just completed an amazing milestone. As a matter of fact, just to tell you how difficult it is, there's only, the last count I've seen, there's less than 60 in the state of Alabama fire officers that have completed this program. He recently completed the Executive Fire Officer Program through the National Fire Academy. It's a four-year program. It's extremely challenging. It's very selective. Only a couple of hundred officers in the entire country get an opportunity to go through this program. It's extremely competitive. You have to have typically a bachelor's degree to get in. He's also already completed his master's degree in executive leadership. So this benefits not only himself, but more importantly, it benefits the fire service and the citizens of Mobile. When you go through this course, you're working with fire officers from all over the nation. And when you get an opportunity to sit down and speak with them, you realize that many of the problems that we face, or challenges, I'd like to say, that we face exist across the entire United States. And so that network that you develop of being able to pick up the phone and call your peers from across the country and come up with creative solutions to any issues you may be facing is absolutely invaluable. And I can attest, because I went through it and graduated a couple of years ago, and I do know what it is, he's only the second person right now in Mobile Fire Rescue Department that has it, and I'm making a push to push many of our officers towards it. Anybody that wants to go, I support them to go. And so it's just a matter of getting them into the program through the selective process. But not only did I want to present his certificate for such an amazing achievement, but I'd also like to give him our Mobile Fire Rescue Department Service Recognition Award. It's for having demonstrated exceptional leadership qualities by consistently completing tasks in an exemplary manner or by voluntarily expending major effort toward the completion of non-job-related tasks solely for the betterment of the department. And he certainly fits that bill, so I'd like to encourage everybody to congratulate Chief Keller on this amazing accomplishment.
He put me on the spot. Well, I'd just like to say thank you to, most importantly, to my wife, who, she pushed me through it, because there were times when I said I was over it and didn't want to do it anymore, and she's just been very supportive and for Chief Lamie and for y'all, for this administration, you know, for Chief Barber and the leadership we have from our council, from the mayor. You know, without your support, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing in the fire service and in our fire department, and I'm just very appreciative of that. And we're able to pay it forward and to get the next generation that's going to take over the leadership and pass this knowledge on to them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you and congratulations. Certainly appreciate all of your hard work.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We'd probably move in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. Request of a waiver on the noise ordinance at Meadowland Honor Park on June 12th and in Cooper Riverside Park on August 1st.
So moved. Second.
We'd probably move in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today is the public hearings to consider approval of certificates of public convenience and necessity to Gregory Sargent, doing business as Southern Transportation, and Sineva Robinson, doing business as CNS Transit Express.
Is there anyone here that would like to offer any commentary on these particular public hearings?
Speaker 1363, is anyone there?
We're not there yet.
If not, anyone that would like to speak relative to these public hearings? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Danny Cordy.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
She's going to speak to the agenda item.
Excuse me. Were you signed in to speak on these public hearing items?
He told me to come back, John Williams, come back.
She wants to talk about the incident.
Really? We should let her. Was that connected to the public hearings?
No. That would be an agenda item.
It's an agenda item, okay.
Did she sign up? Did she sign up to speak?
Did you sign in to speak on that item?
I did.
We'll get her, we'll get her.
I spoke, I was here last week.
Would you like her to come? Let her speak.
Ms. Lala, let's find out what item she wanted to sign in on, and let's get her signed up, please.
Does Mr. Williams want to call her?
It's appropriate time.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Correct, after the signing.
I understand, but Mr. Williams invited up, so I'm giving endeavors. That's all I'm doing, Mr. Davis. Thank you. It'll be just one more.
Okay. Danny Cordy.
Mrs. Cordy, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council, Mayor Stimson and his staff, ladies and gentlemen. Danny Cordy, Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority at 301 Government Street. As we all know, it's been an interesting 15 years in our country, in our area, and it's been a little while since I've come in front of you, as I like to try to do, to bring you up to date on the sports events that the Sports Authority hosts, attract, supports, and even tries to home-grow sometimes to keep them here in town. And it's really, when you look back on what's happened the last 15 months, sports events, yeah, they took a few months off. There was a three-and-a-half-month period from early March last year to late June that we did not host events, but once it turned back on, so to speak, it slowly started ratcheting up. And what we found out is a lot of the youth sports, that of course, that's the main kind of events we go after, really started ratcheting up. These kids want to play. They want to play basketball. They want to play volleyball, play golf, tennis. They wanted to get back out. And because of that, the future of sporting events, especially sports tourism, I think, is very strong. There might be some conventions and meetings that may never come back, but sports, it's been unbelievable with what's going on. Just as an example and as a report, our fiscal year, like the governments, like city and county, are on the October 1st year. For the first quarter, October, November, December, we hosted five events, which again is a decent quarter. After the first of the year and starting in early February, we went from early February to early May, over that 14-week period, we hosted 14 events. So we were real pleased about that, and I have to also say a big thank you to both the city council and the county commission that your investment has had us, had a chance for us to take that and turn that into almost a little over $10 million economic impact from October 1st to now for the 19 events that we've hosted. And also, as an example, in February, when Mardi Gras went away, we were able to get the convention center, and we hosted four volleyball tournaments in the convention center when we never would have had a chance to do that. Now granted, it's not on the scale of Mardi Gras, we all know that, but the four events was roughly about a $2 million economic impact that would have been zero if we hadn't had a chance to do that, and the fact that these kids want to play. In this past late April, we hosted the largest volleyball tournament that we can find by records, by research, the largest volleyball tournament ever held in Mobile County. We had approximately 180 teams in town for that last weekend in April. So that in itself was about a $2.5 million impact. So again, you can see that sports are coming back, and we have 13 more events for the fiscal year, and Ballin' on the Bay, the big basketball tournament, coming up this weekend, which is going to be also a big event, possibly the largest ever. So thank you so much for your time, and any questions, please let us know.
Any questions of Mr. Cordy?
I don't have a question.
Ms. Rich?
But, and I know that I've talked to Danny about this, during the '08, which was a terrible recession for the nation, youth sports, travel, and competition hardly took a hit at all because parents will sacrifice for their kids to come and be in events. So it really is a really good niche to be part of. When you mention all of the 19 events, how many were youth-related?
Actually, thank you for asking. 16 of the 19 were youth. When I say youth, I want to say 20 years old and less.
Sure, right.
So that is a concentration, and you're right. Youth sports are going to continue to grow. I believe they grew 3% or 4% during the Great Recession, which of course, the rest of the tourism industry was contracting. So, and we're seeing the same thing here, and I think the future sports tourism is just going to continue to explode. So again, thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Because we could not be a part of that industry, so to speak, without city and county investments. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cordy.
Good afternoon, Robert Clopton, Sr., 2612 Charlotte Oaks Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. Mr. President, Council, Mayor's staff, members and friends.
Mr. Clopton.
Sir.
If you could, speak just a little closer in the microphone, please.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The mission of the NAACP has never changed since 1809. It's always to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights to all people, and to challenge injustice, discriminations, anytime, anyplace, and anywhere. Today, our focus is on an indiscriminate enemy, an infectious enemy to society. No, that's not coronavirus. That enemy is gun violence. At some point, say, 2018, Alabama per capita was second highest in the nation, only following Alaska on gun violence, the deaths from gun violence. Gun violence in the U.S. continues to permeate our society, spiraling out of control, resulting in tens of thousands of deaths each year. I think the average for the U.S. of A is around 36,000 deaths per year. The ramifications of gun violence, not only threaten our committees, our communities, it threatens all demographics, homes, it threatens schools, churches, employment, parks, streets, synagogues, mosques. It's everywhere, and it's growing. On June 4th, it's National Gun Violence Awareness Day. June 4th, it's Friday. It's also known as Wear Orange Day in remembrance of Haddaya Pendleton, a 15-year-old that was killed one week after participating in the second inauguration events for President Barack Obama. In lieu of that, the NAACP, all branches in the state of Alabama, at 11:00 a.m., as well as gun violence prevention supporters and advocates across the country, will wear orange to honor the victims, and we will hold simultaneous press conferences at that time. So we're asking for your help, your involvement, and your commitment and communication on the awareness of gun violence. You can wear orange. You can take a photo of yourself and a family member in your orange attire, share it on your social media, orange ribbon, orange shirt. But as for me and 19 other NAACP peers, we will meet outside and hold a press conference to stress the importance of not only wearing orange, but to the awareness of gun violence in America, in the state, and Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clopton. I just want to make certain that I heard all of the particulars correctly. You and the organization, NAACP, are asking citizens to wear what and on what date?
Orange.
Orange?
Orange, June 4th, 2021. This is Friday.
Friday. Yes, sir. And Ms. Gregory?
I'm sorry, Mr. Clopton, can you just tell us where the news conference will be that you mentioned?
It will be beneath the awning, outside of this building.
Oh, okay, right here outside?
Yes.
At 11:00?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Clopton?
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I would like to thank you for coming down and addressed the council this morning because I wasn't aware of that particular day. You know, it was a day of disturbance on June 4th. And if you don't have a flyer or anything that we can post on our social media page, I'd like for, Cassandra, if you could get something created, you know, and then share it with us, what we can share on our social media page, if, you know, y'all can connect together and everything, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Small will have that Wednesday morning, and I could forward that to the clerk if that's sufficient.
Yeah, a public relation person would be great with that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Central Street. Let me begin by saying how great it is to see Let me begin by saying how great it is to see you all in one row of the diet. So, this is great to see us back in the chamber. I rise today to, uh, speak about just a few items. Things that I have touched on before, still wanting to gain clarity. The last time I spoke, I identified the idea that any information recorded in this meeting in this session should be considered formal information and from that, I believe those requests from citizens should be acknowledged. Um, so, starting with 21422, the Restore Fund. Is there a way of obtaining the inventory, what's been utilized so far and the map of the areas that are being directly impacted, particularly with the general items that we see today? I'm dealing with 08418. Uh, what area will the lights be located? And is this in direct relation to 08417? I just want to compare the differences in the amounts that are allotted for each agenda item. Uh, 08403, I wanted to ask, Mr. President, is there any status update on that request that you were going to make on behalf of the Public Works Inventory List? And then, if there's any from the administration as well? Um, I submitted that information as requested, haven't had any feedback yet. Um, 31400, uh, what is the purpose or expectation of this grant with the Alabama Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area? Was there any specificities on the link provided? I haven't seen any paperwork. And then lastly, 31401, uh, this is with the $60 million allotment. My, my primary question is, if this is approved, will it grant the administration the discretion to basically appropriate these resources as they deem necessary? Is there some type of process that the citizens are able to engage in determining what these resources might be allocated for? Or is there something that has been presented to the council already that kind of identifies what's going on? And if so, would you all share that information? So, I'm hoping that there can be some type of response from either body to those questions. And let us always remember, taxpayer resources. Good to see you all in the same room.
Earl Goji with the Short Term Rental Committee.
As Mr. Goji comes to the podium, just as an introduction, these are members of the Short Term Rentals Group who have spent several months studying how to work with and deal with or regulate short-term rentals in the city. As you all might remember, we started looking at short-term rentals on behalf of some citizens who contacted us. And we kind of came to a, a stopping point where we realized that we were not going to be able to put anything forward prior to the UDC being approved. So, we set up this advisory council and put them to work. And Earl is here with the members today to, or some of the members, to introduce them and just give us some brief highlights on the work they have been doing and some of the research. And he will have a report to present to us to study as we go forward. So, Earl, if you would?
Good morning, my name is Earl, Earl Goji. As Ms. Gina said already, I am the chairman of the Ad hoc Short Term Rentals Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, this is, uh, well, let me first off, uh, give you, give a, uh, thanks to all of you folks for creating this and giving the group that you see up here the opportunity to, uh, be good citizens. It was a relatively easy task. It's nice when there's a clear start date, defined mission or objective, and then a, then a deadline at the end. It's easy to volunteer for something that you know has a definite end date. So, thank you for that. Uh, I'd like to, in the next minute or two, give a, a brief summary of our committee's activities and then an equally brief summary of our results and findings. And then I'll follow that up with, uh, I'd like to introduce all eight members of our committee, of which you see five of them here today. And if time would allow, we'd be happy to answer a question or two if it, if it should arise. The activities of our group started with a resolution that you folks passed the last week of January that tasked this Citizens Advisory Committee with developing specific safety and operational requirements for short-term rentals. And then try, uh, and also asked us to, uh, identify the appropriate zoning districts where short-term rentals would be permitted and, uh, or short-term rentals would require, um, approval or permission from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We met, um, we met 12 times, uh, the first meeting being held on the 10th of, uh, March. Eight times as a committee as a whole. One time, we divided in half to decide to address, uh, tackle 36 i- uh, in items of concern that we felt we must address in order to satisfy the requirements of our resolution. And then we had three more meetings of our recording or our report-writing team for a total of 12. They were all online meetings. Uh, the fi- the last meeting we had was on the 20th of May, week before last. And, uh, we will, uh, our, the, the deadline, as I mentioned previously, is actually the 30th of June. So, we've kind of, we were able to finish a little earlier than expected. Uh, the results that I'd like to relate real quickly are, uh, we came to a consensus on some important items, the terms and definitions for short-term rentals, the permitting requirements, the fire and safety requirements, and then the owner responsibilities. However, I must also report that we did not come to a consensus on the zoning districts where short-term rentals would be allowed by right. Uh, our group, like, uh, as you folks have probably experienced already in the discussion of short-term rentals, our group split right down the middle regarding, uh, where we would allow, uh, short-term rentals, again, by right. Just to make it clear, there are 15 zoning districts identified for the city of Mobile, 12 of which we all, we did reach a consensus on. The three problematic ones were all residential. The residential agricultural one, the R1 or single-family dwelling district, and then the R2, the two-family dwelling or duplex district. And those we are, the ones that we, we are, uh, we did not come to a consensus on. As the chairman, I felt, we had two entrenched groups. As the chairman, I felt like we needed to do something to bring our discussions, our activities to a conclusion. So, what I decided would be best is if we captured, captured the decisions by one group, the decisions by another group, and then the reasons both groups felt the way they did. You'll find that on the report that I believe Ms. Gregory will send to all of you in the near future on Addendums A and B. So, I ask that if you, if you, uh, to remember, if, if you remember anything that I say this morning, please go, when the time comes, to create a new short-term rental ordinance, please look at Addendums A and B in the report that we issued and come to understand what the decisions were in each of the, you know, from our committee, the two camps or two groups in our committee, and the reasoning behind it. I think it'll do, serve well for the literally tens of thousands of folks who have, uh, personal dwellings that they may want to convert into short-term rentals. The, uh, next, that's it. That's, uh, what I'd like to do now is go ahead and introduce, and I will introduce the folks who are not here today. And then I will ask each of these people to introduce themselves. First off, myself, again, my name is Earl Goji. And I didn't give my address at the beginning, I'm sorry. I live in Alpine Hills subdivision. I'm the president of the Alpine Hills Community Action Group. My address is 5962 Chalet Drive North. And, uh, I am also the representative of District 7. And our vice chairman?
Um, Andrew Ziegpen, I live at 2162 Dolphin Street. Um, I was serving as the vice chairman. I was also representing the, uh, short-term rental hosts that are in the city. Um, I represent roughly 100 to 150 different short-term rental hosts that are located in our city.
Let me add as well that Andrew's input was critical for us because he was the one actual owner of three short-term rentals in the city limits. Additionally, our recording secretary, who isn't here today, Chris Enzor, she is the, she and her husband run KNC Computer Consulting. I believe they must do consulting in this building primarily because Chris brought to the committee, uh, an intimate and detailed knowledge of the action and interaction of the various committees in this, uh, in the, in City Hall, and that was most useful for us. Sam?
Sam Winter, I'm in, uh, representing District 2. Uh, address is 22 South Lafayette Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36604. And, uh, I was representing the real estate aspects, uh, industry here in Mobile and allowing that input to be involved in this committee. And, uh, want to thank, uh, Councilman Levon Manzi for reaching out to me and asking me to serve in this capacity and, uh, really enjoyed it. And I enjoyed working with everybody on the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bradford Roy, I represent District 3. My address is 1114 Old Shell Road. It's been a joy to serve on this committee. Mr. President, council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
District 4 was represented by Wayne Gardner. Wayne, Wayne owns a bar downtown and I'm ashamed, I'm ashamed I don't remember which one it was, but, uh, but anyway, he was, he also brought to the committee, uh, prior ownership of an Airbnb and when he was in North Carolina before moving back to Mobile. So, he was, he helped us in that regard. Uh, District 5, as I mentioned already, was Chris Enzor, our recording secretary. She represented District 5. Ms. Alita?
Good morning, my name is Alita Greenspan. I live at 6159 Brandy Run Road South, Mobile, Alabama, 36608. I represented District 6 and I thank you, Ms. Rich, for allowing me to serve on this committee. A lot of professionals' input was involved in developing this and I'm very proud of our report and the people that I served with. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, District 7 was me. And then, uh, representing Visit Mobile was Margot Gilbert. I believe Margot has a, uh, part-time job down the street. She's the, uh, general manager of the Battle House Hotel and Spa. So, she could be with us here today. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my introductions. If we had time and if there were any questions, we have the personnel here who can probably supply an answer.
Questions of, of this great committee?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question necessarily, but I do want to thank all of you for taking your time to be on this advisory committee, to do the research and spend the amount of time that, that you did to, to work through and come to the maybe non-consensus, but it sounds like you came to a consensus on a number of items and that will certainly help this council as we move forward once the UDC is approved in making our decisions about short-term rentals. So, again, thank you so much for serving. Uh, we always appreciate the, the time and energy that residents, um, take to, to volunteer on these committees. Um, we sure appreciate it and it will make our work a lot easier. And thank you, Earl, for serving District 7 and for being the chair.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to commend the committee. Uh, my representative was Chris Enzor and I received a message from her this morning saying, really, what, what all of you have said, that while it involved a significant commitment of time, you found the service on the committee rewarding. And, uh, I appreciate your very concise report and, uh, I wouldn't get too upset about, uh, not being able to address the zoning issues. That tends to be a contentious issue, no matter who's taking it up. Uh, but, but I, again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your, uh, commitment to this, this important work. Thank you.
If I could comment?
Sure, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Um, I'll echo the sentiments. Thank you all so very much for volunteering your time and your resources and your talents, um, to offer this report to the council. I look forward to reading it when we receive it. And again, just thank you so much. It's wonderful when, you know, people come together, even though you did not build the consensus, you found a way to give us the information towards that consensus. And for that, I thank you very, very much.
And I just, I join my colleagues in thanking all of you, particularly Mr. Weiner, who represented District 2. This is a very important subject matter. Uh, we hear from residents and from owners all the time about this new climate that, that we're in. And so, we know that your work will hopefully make the road a little, and the pathway, a little smoother for us as we move forward with passing, uh, any type of ordinance. So, again, thank all of you for your time and your energy.
And Earl, if you'll go ahead and just email me the report, then I'll go ahead and pass it along to all of the other council members and the administration.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
And again, thank you so much for, for all your work.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Suzette Mason?
Hi, my name is Suzette Mason. I reside in the backyard in apartment 1363 Isaiah Road, 36693. Uh, I wanted to, the, the home is up to be destroyed, but, but it's been vandalized significantly by people to begin with. I have been harassed since six days after my mother passed away due from the fire, which I lived with her as a caretaker at the time. And I have been harassed every day and it's grew. It's grew from Caldwell, the attorneys, detectives, I mean, broken into my home, steal my keys, they vandalized my, my cars. They vandalized the lawnmowers, two of them, that I have to cut the grass at the house. Uh, it has grew, um, to, they stole my cat that woke me up. My, I was given a cat whenever I moved to Three Princess Anne. I thought I'd be safe there, that was worse there. I, I started being followed by the fire department, firemen. They had their tags with Caldwell detectives. I mean, I, I, like, one got a ticket, uh, north, followed me about 50 of them up to Huntsville last year, June the 7th, on 162 North. One of them got a ticket. Um, uh, my car was vandalized tremendously, December the 5th, at Walmart, where I was a bell ringer, Walmart on Moffett Road, at 2:00. I was given another cat for the intention to her to be stolen, but it was, she was stolen by one of the detectives at Target on 1207, um, December the 14th of 2020. I have, I, I, my home, myself, my, my, I've had-
Ms. Mason?
The smoke bombs-
Ms. Mason?
Yes, sir?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What did you sign in to speak on?
This is about the home. This is, uh, I, I went to, I have told Frank Cruz, which he's the administrator over my mother's estate of all these things. And so, I went to him April the 21st of 2021 to tell him, you know, how it grew. It's got the Army tags that followed me, the Water Company, the, you know, so many people just harassing me continuously, daily. And, and I'm frightened and, and he goes, he says, well, I'll go- and I tell, Dell Mims came and where I started getting things out of my house because I've been harassed so much out of the home. And a lot of the furniture is mine also. Uh, he boarded up all the doors and, and he went in and he had it on speakerphone and I continued talking, but he's, uh, Dell Mims told Frank Cruz that there was a water line there and they can make a lot of money at my mother's house, there's a fire hydrant in the yard.
Excuse me?
And Frank Cruz told her to sell, sell, sell. And the, and the people that came to the house to look at it were-
Ms. Mason?
The stalkers on it.
Ms. Mason, I am, I'm sorry, but unfortunately-
And also, I, uh-
One, one second, Ms. Mason. Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. That, that's all your time.
Well, and I, I applied for the building permit last Wednesday-
Yes, ma'am.
On the 26th-
President Manzi?
Uh, yes, Ms. Rich- Yes, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. You are still residing at the house, from what I can tell, and David, is there some resource that might be available? I know that was an incident in District Six as well, and I think you, I think the office was helpful.
I, I'm residing recently, and I-
Okay. I would like to hear from Mr. Dauphin, but please.
It's my understanding, Ms. Rich, that she is not residing in the structure. It is no longer habitable, and it's no longer-
Right. But is she in the tent behind it, similar to the incident in Six?
Last week, her testimony was yes, and every time our inspectors make an inspection, she is either on the property in a vehicle or in the tent, like she mentioned last, but she is not residing in the structure.
No, I know that part.
And her testimony this, today even stated that she has moved to another location.
Right.
I think it was Three Princess Anne, is what she just stated here.
No.
Okay. There, there might be some resources for you that you could probably get some help with.
How far to see you best?
Not about the house, about your circumstances. There's the homeless center, if there's any homelessness. If you're not homeless, then there's really nothing.
I'm not homeless.
Okay.
Ms. Mason, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I really am sorry, but I'm charged with, of holding the rules. Your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
And, and if you, that's pretty much all I can say. Your time is up. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
It is, it is my understanding from discussions with David earlier that there is no evidence of a, of a permit of any kind being applied for.
So I just recommend that we continue along, let David, as he described in the pre-council meeting, start the process.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
I do have a question, and I guess between our attorney and probably Chief of Staff, Barbara, if there's a law or ordinance that's on the books or anything that the city can do when a person is living in a house with no utilities running? Because I had a resident to contact me on last week, and they wanted me to do something, and I'm like, I have to check on it. So when the resident was down here talking, that would remind me. Is there any type of law or ordinance on the books that's, it's not?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. I mean, we do see that happen, obviously, if it's not their property, then they'll be given a trespass warning, but if it is their property, there's no requirement of utilities, but it can get into a Health Department issue depending on the conditions.
Health Department, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Consent resolutions held over, 40376, declare the structure at 1363 Isaiah Road a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So moved.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over. If you don't mind, I'll take them all together.
I don't have objection, no matter.
08388, approve purchase order to Harrell's for fertilizer for the Isaiah City Golf Course. 08389, approve purchase order to emergency equipment professionals for ambulance. 08390, approve purchase order to Furno Washington for power ambulance stretcher. 08391, approve purchase order to Cronus for annual renewal subscription. 08392, approve purchase order to CDW Government for network service switches, transceivers, and power supplies. 08393, approve purchase order to CDW Government for Microsoft Windows Server software and licenses. 08394, approve purchase order to Forensic Vendor for forensic software renewal. 08395, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for pickup truck. 08396, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Blazer SUV. 08397, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for pickup truck. 13398, authorized change order to the contract with McElhaney Construction for 2019 traffic safety improvements. 25399, accept a permanent drainage easement from Merchants, Alabama, for property on Yeen Street. 31400, authorize a grant application with Aleah in the Alabama Gulf Coast high-intensity drug, drug trafficking area. 31401, approve approval to receive funds from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. 6402, approve settlement agreement and release of claims, Davis. And 08403, approve purchase order to AutoNation for Mobile for pickup truck.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
On 31-401, which is accepting of the funds for 60 million. I'm, I know last week I asked some questions about what would be the city's movement on this. If I read the six pages that we are basically approving, the recipient, as our mayor, you know, has pledged certain guidance, and there is a lot of guidance on this, but my question is, does the administration already have a list, or have you compiled any thought process on where this will be going in the future?
We have not compiled a list. We have a presentation today to take a look at the different buckets that this money can be spent in, and the guidance that's been given to us by Treasury. And so we do know that it can be used for things like tourism, HVAC systems, drainage, water sewer, as well as premium pay for essential employees. And so that meeting will happen today. We're hoping to be able to get some guidance with legal so that we can make a presentation to the council when we have some idea of how we want to allocate that money.
Okay. Because basically, if, if I read this correctly, and I'm not an attorney, I probably should have asked our attorney to, to give us some guidance on this, but as the recipient, that's the, the main way this money will be allocated, and I understand that, and I respect it. But again, there's short term as far as, you know, coming up with the program so that you can start obligating, and then you have two years for, but out to 226, actually, if I've read this correctly, for finishing your programs that you put towards this-
Right. And some of the guy-
This funding mechanism.
Yeah, and some of the guidance changed. We need to get you the correct amount on this. nature, do you have it?
We were told 58.2 last one. Was there administrative fee or something from the feds?
No. When the Treasury sent, it was an estimate of 60 million. Once they did send us the final allotment, it was 58.2 million.
Yeah, we heard that last week, actually, but this document doesn't make reference. But even, it's a lot of money, and it does have parameters, but for the council to be aware at all times of what the expenditures are, it would be wise and transparent.
Right. And again, as soon as we get the internal meetings on how that money can be spent under the guidelines that are given to us by Treasury, we'll be glad to present that to council.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any further questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Unless there are questions, I would just like to go ahead and just say that we are going to have on, on this agenda a total of several vehicles that we're going to purchase today, and every week, we purchase numerous vehicles, but we keep running short in the Public Works Department with trash and garbage vehicles. The core services of our city is police and fire, trash and garbage. Those are the four core services. We need to plan where we, we have the resources. We need to plan where when these old vehicles run out, we have new vehicles to replace them. The public, if you want to see them up in air, then don't pick up that trash and garbage, and you'll hear from them. And when they ask me what's going on, I don't have no answer, but I'm saying if we, every week, can plan and change out these regular vehicles, today we're going to get, we're going to get seven of them. We use, we need to use that same level of planning for our trash and garbage vehicles. That's all I'm saying.
Any, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, numbered 37404 through 6411.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for consent resolution being introduced, 37-404 through 60-411.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will take all these together.
Yes, ma'am.
37404, approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Gregory Sargent. 37405, approve certificate of public convenience and necessity to Sineva Robinson. 37406, a special events retail license for SIP and Paint. 58407, declare weeds noxious, Weedling Group 1614. 58408, assess cost for removal of weeds, Weedling Group 1612. 6409, approve award of special bonus to the May 2021 Firefighter of the Month. 6410, determine appropriation to the Village of Spring Hill serves a public purpose, and 6411, determine appropriation to the Three Mile Creek Partnership serves a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21412.
Mr. President, by council rule, this resolution will be laid over for one week.
Yes, sir.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 08413 through 21425.
Mr. President, by council rule, this resolution will be laid over for one week.
Yes, sir. Let's hear from Mr. Vice President, Mr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just reminding all the citizens that on June the 12th, we will have our District Three Community Fun Day, where we will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new playground equipment and basketball court, and also revealing the net transformation of Tremel Park. This will take place at 1:00 on Saturday, June the 12th, at 3600 Albert Club Road, inviting all the citizens to come out for a day of fun. Also, on June the 22nd, we will be having our District Three meeting. This will be a very important meeting for all the citizens of District Three, asking you all to come to the Riverside Baptist Church, which is located at 3130 Dauphin Avenue Parkway. We invited the mayor, the chief of staff, other several other city departments, and also got a phone call on this weekend confirming that Mr. Chris Curry, the director, director for the airport, will be present at this particular meeting to answer questions that you may have about the new airport located in Brooklyn Field. Again, this meeting will take place on Tuesday, June the 22nd, at 6:00 PM at the Riverside Baptist Church. We have sent out notices to every resident in District Three and looking to see you there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Gregor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Tomorrow evening, I will be speaking to the League of Women Voters. It will be at Trinity Episcopal Church, 1900 Dauphin Street, beginning at 5:00. They have a, a number of topics they would like for me to address, but one of the main ones is women in politics and what my experience has been like, so I appreciate them reaching out to me and the opportunity to speak to this group. Again, that will be at 5:00 tomorrow evening. Coming up June 12th, will be a basketball camp at the Hillsdale Recreation Center. It's Jason Caffey and the Universal Youth Foundation holding this. It will be for ages nine to 17, and starts at 10:00, goes until 2:00 PM. We will have posters out there, already posters up and about, but it's open to children of those ages, nine to 17. It's free, so come on out. We also will have members of the Police Department there. Curtis Graves and his department will be participating in this. It will be a really wonderful opportunity for these kids and the Police Department, as well as other members of the city, to come out and be a part of this and work with these children. I look forward to being a part of that as well. Mr. Small is planning a district meeting, and I've got one in the works as well. I haven't been able to hold a district meeting since a year ago Christmas, so we are well overdue for one, and thankfully, now that things have settled down a bit and people feel more comfortable getting out, we will be holding a District Seven community meeting, most likely around the 1st of July, end of June, 1st of July. We'll be announcing the date, the time and location very soon. Since I normally, during my Christmas meetings, recognize all of the community action groups and homeowners associations, along with our first responders, which includes Public Works, we'll be doing that again, so it'll be sort of a Christmas in June or Christmas in July kind of a meeting to do some of the things that we missed out on this past year. We'll also, of course, have members of the administration come to provide information about various topics of concern and interest to the people in the district. So we'll be putting that out very shortly, as soon as we get things nailed down. And for those of you who travel Ziegler Boulevard regularly, as I do, you know that it is back open. Some utility poles have been moved, some more drainage work has been done, and right now, the road is open, and work is really coming along very quickly on both sides, both Phase One and Phase Two. So I just want to thank everyone for their patience with all of these detours that are necessary to get this program going, and we look forward to having a nice, smooth, four-lane road very soon, in the next couple of years, anyway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Gregor and Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be announcing next, next week, a community meeting for the Trinity Gardens Community in June. I'll be working on the date, and I will announce that date next week, but we'll be going to Trinity Gardens in June at the Dutch Community Center. I would like to announce that the new splash pad at the Tricentennial Park is open and operating. I was down on the weekend, and it was just about packed out. We had children everywhere, but as I said this morning, the, the grass around the circumference of that splash pad is dead, and it has taken away from the splash pad and from the park because it's the first thing you see when you drive in the park, is the splash pad. You see all that brown grass up there. I would like to, I'm requesting that they take that out and put some fresh grass in. I know we know what to do. If you go up O'Shea Road, where they're putting the sidewalks down, starting at 165, it's a hillside there, and they got new grass coming down that hill, all the way down to the sidewalk. Beautiful green grass, with the same kind of grass at my park. We know what to do. I want green grass over there at, around that splash pad. The sidewalks on O'Shea Road are being installed. As you, as I've said before, those sidewalks have been paid for, for four years, but the citizens in crime and in Midtown are very happy that finally construction has started on the sidewalks along O'Shea Road. I said something about this morning, that is, I'm saying this sort of public window that several months ago, we, we've already allocated $800,000 for upgrades at Fickers Park, and the upgrade would include a grand entry that would honor Mrs. Florita Fortune of the Seashore Park employee who dedicated more than 50 years, I believe it was 53, more than 50 years of her life to teaching and supervising children at that park, and we came up with the design. We called the family together over there almost a year ago. We called the family together, and we demonstrated to the family what we were going to do. We're going to connect all of that with the Walker Park, which we're going to name after Miss Florita Fortune, and we paid for it, put the money up. Nothing has been done. So I've already requested that the administration- So I've already requested that the administration take a look at that to find out what is holding us up. It's not just Figures Park. You can go to the Trinity Gardens Park. There are thousands of dollars allocated for upgrades. Nothing is happening. It seemed to be the story of District 1. I can't speak for no... I haven't heard anything from any other district. So soon that project is coming out on schedule. But for District 1, the same thing happened to me with resurfacing. They came and resurfaced five, six streets in Trinity Garden, and the whole team left in November. They came back last month and started on one street and then left that street. And I had to beg for them to come back and finish that street. So it seemed to be the story of District 1. And I'm asking the administration to give attention to these issues. Thank you very much, Gregor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. It is actually a long-awaited day at Memes Park, and where we will make available to some of our older kids a place to play baseball year-round, regardless of the weather. As soon as the lightning's out of the area, the new synthetic field will drain well enough that tournaments and games that are scheduled will be able to resume again as soon as it's safe to do so. And that's new in Mobile. As long as I've been coaching, all the years that I coached, I'd say, there was always the important games, the big tournaments, that were interrupted by rain in here in our city. And so we're... On July 1st, I'm being told, and we hope that we are able to stay on that schedule, that Memes Park will open its first day of baseball on a synthetic field. And I would ask the administration, I think the mayor's already approached me before in a brief conversation, to put together a... I'm asking the administration now to let's follow through with a press conference to open it with the mayor and I, invite the city council as well, of course. But I'm also asking Memes Park to put a game together so that we can at least see the life go into that field. It would... The 1st is July... 1st of July is a Thursday, which I think would be a good day to do that. And so I'll let y'all know when I know from the park. But if, in these next 30 days, if we could start working toward that, I think it'd be a grand event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that at 1:30 today, there'll be a welcome-back party to the Connie Hudson Senior Center. So I thank the Parks and Recreation Department for allowing that to happen. There'll be an ice cream party. Colleagues are invited to join me as we welcome back the citizens to enjoy the resource of that senior center. I'd also like to ask the administration if they have... Not to publicly express this, but I know that the splash pad at the Medal of Honor Park has got some issues, and it hasn't been able to reopen. There was information on Facebook, which opened it, and unfortunately, people got there and it wasn't. So that was a bit of a problem. But if we could have some understanding of when that might be open, that would be terrific because it's certainly a resource people are looking forward to. So thank you very much for getting that information out. Thank you.
I want to use this period to just think, again and again, our Public Works Department, the members of that team, they are working under some very stressful conditions as relates to equipment and the demand of the public. We get a bunch of emails relative to trash and garbage and things of that nature, and they always respond. And I just want to let them know, of course, Colonel, and to John Peeve and everyone else associated with Public Works, that we do appreciate you. And I'm hopeful that with some of these resources that we will be given by the federal government that we can not just talk in appreciation, but show it in a very tangible way. I'm hopeful that that will be a part of the program. That concludes my announcements. Well, with one exception. We're going to start our series of community meetings for District 2. Hopefully, we'll have an outline of that schedule on next week. Of course, observing social distancing, of course, asking ones who would be there to wear their mask as appropriate so that we can hopefully continue to plan for 2022 and years beyond that. That concludes my announcements. Do I hear a motion? Anything from the administration? Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? All in favor?